Good evening and welcome to the July 10, 2017, meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Right.
Sayam?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
Shildroth?
Here.
Hanky?
Pugano?
Here. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes of June 26 and the workshop minutes of June 19, 2017? Hearing none, Consulman Lee moves to approve the minutes. Seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. At this time, I would like to move to amend the agenda to add a presentation by the Florissant Rotary to the Florissant Police Explorer Program. Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Mr. Mayor, would you join me? As President, Councilmembers, most of you know me, so the introduction's somewhat superfluous, but I am Rick Dorsey. And up until 10 days ago, I was proud to be President of the Florissant Rotary Club. In the past year, the Rotary Club has donated over $116,000 to the community. And among other things, we dedicated a bench in memory of Dick Cerami outside the Nature Lodge in Sunset Park. We've gave away seven $2,000 scholarships to high school seniors. We've made cap grant donations to Valley Industries Sheltered Workshop and Trinity High School. And also large cash donations to Mary Grove Team, Valley Industries, and several other organizations. And it's my pleasure with my fellow Rotaryian, the mayor, to call up the Florissant Police Explorers because we are making a donation to the Explorer post in the amount of $500. There you go. You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, thank you, Mr. Dorsey and the Explorer Scouts. The Rotary has been a great community asset for Florissant for a very long time. Not only do they support those less fortunate in our community, but they also have great programs throughout the whole world. And Rotary is one of the primary organizations responsible for the near eradication of polio in the world. Also want to give a shout out to our Explorer Scouts. They've always been a very good organization, very active, and have made great contributions to many of our events. I want to thank each and every one of you for your service to the Explorer Scouts. And best of luck to you in your law enforcement careers. Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda this evening. Please remember that this is not a question and answer period, but we would be happy to stay after the meeting and discuss any problems that you are having. Good evening. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. John Engelmeyer, 1281 Graham Road, Florissant, 63031. This evening, I'll be speaking on Bill 9288. And at this time, I would like to respectfully sit at the table over there because of the volume of information I have. I can move the microphone over there and speak and again, give my presentation on 9288, bill number, rather than now. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Holsher.
I'm Brian Holsher. I'm the Executive Director with MSD. And MSD is located 2350 Market Street in St. Louis. I'm here this evening just to update the council on the meetings at MSD and in cooperation with the city staff, we're going to have regarding the basement backups that occurred during the heavy rains two months and 18 months ago. There are three groups of residents who have similar issues having to do with necessitating the installation of backup valves, probably foundation drains, and also some kind of future capital program that's going to be put in place to also increase the capacity of the sewer system. So those three groups, we are sending individual letters out to each one of the individuals in those three areas. Those letters have already sent out. They should be receiving them in the next couple of days. And there's two meetings scheduled. Two groups will meet on July 20, one at 6:00 and one at 7:30 at the Egan Center. Another group will meet on August 3 at 7:00 PM at the JFK Community Center. Again, they'll all receive their letters this week. That doesn't take care of everybody who is impacted by their storms. Outside of those groups, we're going to send individual letters to everybody who had a complaint with MSD during one of those two storms and address their issues separately. Unfortunately, whenever you have an event like that, there isn't one answer that answers everybody's questions, and not everybody has the same issue. But we are going to get out to them. The folks who aren't in those three areas, we've made contact with a lot, if not all of them already, but they will still get a follow-up letter to make sure, see if they have any other additional questions as we try and work through their issues. I do want to thank, I'm sorry, I want to thank the city staff. We've spent some time working with the city staff, trying to figure out how we can make this work. MSD did do a little research. What we're proposing is done in a very few municipalities who also serve as the wastewater utility. So we think we've got a program in place that probably will work and has worked out of the places throughout the country. So, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Holsher, we really appreciate the attention that MSD has given to this and the priority. But in addition to your announcement, we also will have FEMA representatives at these meetings because FEMA has other resources that could really help the people that were affected. And we want to make sure that our folks are fully aware of the resources that'll be available through FEMA.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Hext, 955 Charbonneer. I'm here on behalf of Nextdoor app. Some of you may use it. I know Tom, you use it, and Egan, you use it. I wanted to talk about the city's use of it. Currently, Nextdoor has a feature on there for public agencies such as Florissant to become active and using it as a communication tool to get out to their residents. Currently, we have about 800 households in the Nextdoor app, about 5,000 users in the Florissant area. It's still a startup company. They're currently, the users are growing. We get about 25 to 50 new users a week in the Florissant area. And right now, the area is kind of shattered in the app, but I am working closely with Nextdoor to get that fixed. And...
Yep. It takes it a second.
So, these are the wards. It's sectioned out by two neighborhoods. So if you get too many sharded up areas, you don't get a lot of communication out. If you have them too big, you get too much communication in the area. But you can also post, it's kind of like a Facebook, but with more privacy. You can have this entire area, you can post to the entire area, or you can just post to your one little section block. So what this does is just keeps everything going. And this is my new proposal to Nextdoor, to get everything together and band the community together to get more information. I would like the city to get more communication out to its people, and this is a technology way to get it going.
All right, thank you. Mr. Egan?
Yes, thank you, Nick. I've talked to Nick on numerous occasions about this project, and it's a real interesting way to communicate with, just yet another social media way to communicate with people in the neighborhood. Prior to Nick's involvement in this, for instance, in Ward 3, we probably had four or five different Nextdoor groups or neighborhoods. And Nick has taken upon himself, because he has nothing to do at night, is that right?
I have nothing to do with Nextdoor.
Nothing to do at night.
I'm a volunteer for this community.
And he is, as actually we talked, and he is trying to consolidate it from all these variety of neighborhoods to a ward-centric situation where the councilmen or the city or the different people in the wards can communicate more effectively. And I thank you very much for your efforts.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. We will move to public hearings. We have public hearing number 1707017.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 410-020 of the Florissant Code of Ordinances, the subdivision ordinance as amended. The public hearing will be held by the City Council of the City of Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55, Bruce St. Francois, on Monday, July 10, 2017, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition. To approve a final subdivision of Surrey Plaza 2 for the property located at 2710 North Highway 67. Citizens and parties with interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Thank you. Is a petitioner present? Good evening.
Good evening. Debbie Stos with Premier Civil Engineering, 308 TCW Court, Lake St. Louis, Missouri. Here tonight representing vital development for the approval of the final plat that you see before you. Basically taking the site from 4.08 acres, dividing it into 2.9 and 1.18 acres, reasoning being, Raising Cane's is being developed on Lot A, which is 1.18 acres. And they just wanted it separated into two lots for signage purposes and things of that nature. Happy to answer, sorry, answer any questions you may have.
Okay, now I see lights. I didn't know there were any lights. Mr. Parson?
Thank you.
Yes. No, no, no.
It's Lee. Okay, thank you.
There you go.
All right. As far as the requirements that needed to be met for the, to turn in information for the Director of Public Works, like the certificate showing that all your taxes have been paid and, you know, the Recorder of Deeds Office approving the proposed names of the subdivision, I'm assuming all that has been taken care of ahead of time, or is that still yet to come?
We are working on the name of the, well, it's an existing, it's an existing Surrey Plaza. So basically, they're taking that name, keeping that name and just dividing it into two lots.
Okay.
Right now, it's one lot. So I think the taxes, receipts and everything, everything like that has been taken care of. In fact, they're, you know, they're doing demo and everything now. So I think, you know, we've been working with Tom Goldkamp with the city, and everything is in order as far as what he needs to move it forward.
Okay. One other question. What's in that Raising Cane sauce, man? I don't...
I don't know. Tell me. Trust me, I've done 15 tours and they won't give me the secret.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Sayam?
Thank you, Madam President. I just had one question real quick regarding the special use permit that we approved for Raising Cane some time ago. I think it might have been in November or something like that.
Yes.
I mean, none of the terms of that are changing or anything like that.
No, nothing is changing.
This is only about splitting up the land and that's it, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure. That's all I had. Thank you.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Seeing none, Consulman Sayam moves to close this public hearing. Seconded by Mr. Parson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is old business. The first item under old business is second readings. We have Bill number 9287. Consulman Egan moves for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Caputa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Orders to amend, B5 ordinance number 6697, to allow for a building addition for the property located at 2505 North Highway 67.
Consulman Hanky moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Parson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Orders to amend, B5 ordinance number 6697, to allow for a building addition for the property located at 2505 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Parson?
Aye. Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
I gave you heads up. Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Pugano?
Yes. Bill number 9287 passes and becomes ordinance number 8326. Bill number 9288, Consulman Jones moves for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Caputa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Orders readapting procedure to disclose potential conflict of interest and substantial interest for certain officials as set forth in Title I, Section 105130, compliance with the State Conflict of Interest Law in the Florissant Code of Ordinances.
Consulman Lee moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Orders readapting procedure to disclose potential conflict of interest and substantial interest for certain officials as set forth in Title I, Section 105130, compliance with the State Conflict of Interest Law of Florissant Code of Ordinances.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to
John Engelmeyer, 1281 Graham Road. On the top of the bill that's being presented for the third reading, I have quite a lot of information on the bill in terms of conflict of interest. And if I may bear a moment, underneath the Black Law Dictionary, there's a word conflict. And it's explaining the word conflict. And inside the bill itself, 9288, it talks about direct and indirect with no clear definition. Some time ago, I sent an email to our city attorney, Mr. Hassel. And respectfully, he sent me a nice email back stating that in fact, he can't represent me or respond to me because I'm a citizen. He works for the city, which I can understand and appreciate. But in terms of the bill itself, there's real no definitions within the body of the bill. And Karen, don't get upset with me, but I would love to have this bill read in entirety only because of the words and the usage of the words within the document itself and the understandability of direct versus indirect and conflict of interest, which is, by the way, in our city ordinances and our charter. Tonight, I come before the city council to address the issue of Bill 9288. That is on the agenda this evening, in which I will speak on this bill prior to the passage, whether my comments will make a difference or not. The question I will ask will touch the nerves of many with the intent to better and understand the language in which the purpose, which is the purpose of this bill. I was informed by the city attorney, as I indicated before, Mr. Hassel does not represent me. He represents the City of Florissant. And in doing that, I've contacted Missouri Ethics Commission on a regular basis to determine and define the word, define the word, conflict of interest, direct or indirect. There are several citations, what they would call opinions from the Missouri Ethics Commission, 2001-06-105, which states about the conflict of interest. Another opinion from the Missouri Ethics Commission is 201-06-105, again, addressing the issue of that. And Bill, in the bodyment of the bill itself, it discusses the conflicts before us. Who determines the conflict of interest within the city and substantial interest for certain public officials that is going to be readopted on this ordinance? Whereas the Ethics Commission has determined that cities must report and adopt this bill prior to, I believe, September. Again, the potential conflict of interest phase is addressed again with no clear definition of what is a potential conflict of interest that is being stated in this bill. Item number 30, line 30, it says Missouri revised statutes on the conflict of interest. In reading the section 105-4.98, there's no clarification of the phrase conflict of interest, leaving out the word potential, direct or indirect. I have asked the city attorney, although not responding to me as a private citizen, so I asked before this elected body, an example where indirect interest might arise within a government body. For instance, is a campaign contribution to an individual election campaign holding an office that approves and signs a contract, bids or authorizes an RFP from those vendors, suppliers, or manufacturers an indirect conflict of interest? A council member referred to this as under the table issues. I don't disagree with under the table. I think this is really not for the citizen's sight unless you know how to go onto the MEC website and pull that information up. Line 36 of the bill, it says the sale of land, material supplies, or services to the city or to a contractor. Supplying the city will make it known that interests shall refrain from voting upon or otherwise participating as a city officer. Going further is that on line 41, commission members or employees who will conceal substantial financial interest or willingly violates the requirement of this section shall be guilty of malfeasance in the office of the position and shall forfeit such person's position or office, violation of the subsection where the knowledge is expressed. I sent the email to the city clerk asking the question of any officer, elected official, reporting any such interest of office, conflict of interest to this office of the city clerk. And I was responded back with no. It was supposed to be entered in the Journal of the City. And to my knowledge, there is none for any elected official or employee of the city. The purpose of this section, substantial private interest, is defined. Ownership by an individual, his spouse, or dependent children, whether singly or collectively directed or indirectly, of 10% more of a business entity or an interest having a value of more than $10,000. The receipt of salary, gratuity, or other compensation or remuneration of $5,000 or more. I believe this amount is too high and should be in an opinion not more than $100. That is, for instance, baseball tickets or more each year from an individual partnership or organization, association within the calendar year. Each elected official, the mayor, and the chief administrative officer, the chief purchasing officer, as defined, as identified in Section 105.483 of the Missouri revised statutes and full-time general counsel, if any, shall disclose the following information by May 1st, if there's any transaction occurred during the previous calendar year. The $100 to me is a little bit softer than the $5,000 limit. I would like to see the $100 because of the value of baseball tickets or dinner out. Again, on line 79, business interest in which such a person has substantial interest, define the substantial interest as in the sentence. I need a definition, if possible, of substantial interest. The mayor, chief administrative officer, and the chief purchasing officer also have to disclose by May 1st of previous calendar year, the following information. Name and address of such, of the employers or such persons for whom income of more than, again, $100 or more received during the year covered by this statement. Name and address of such sole proprietor. On line 110, persons required to file where and with what agency more than one financial interest statement in any one calendar year. It's not defined there in terms of where and what agency this is filed with, other than the fact it calls for a city clerk and its city records. And that's on line 23 of the ordinance. I would appreciate consideration of reading this bill in full rather than entitled only. I have several issues with contributions to an individual elected official from vendors dealing with the city, and I have a strong urge to go along with and file a complaint against that. People who make decisions on a financial basis, I think empowers them. And again, looking at a customer base, what time can buy and what money can buy getting a signature on a contract. So I yield to the city council for their consideration, and I would appreciate, again, reading this bill entitled, not entitled only, but entirety. Thank you.
Hearing no further comments. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pugano?
Yes. Bill number 9288 passes and becomes ordinance number 8327. Bill number 9289, Consulman Hanky moves for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Orders establishing a trust agreement for the City of Florissant Employees Pension Plan.
Consulman Hanky moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Shildroth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Orders establishing a trust agreement for the City of Florissant Employees Pension Plan.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pugano?
Yes. Bill number 9289 passes and becomes ordinance number 8328. Bill number 9290, Consulman Lee moves for a second reading. Seconded by Consulman Egan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Orders authorizing the mayor to enter into an exclusive license agreement with Meridian Waste Missouri LLC for solid waste collection services for the residents of the City of Florissant.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Branch Hill Lane, Florissant, Missouri, Ward 4. I was, I'd like to have this clarified. Is this, is this contract going into effect when? Next year or is it in effect this year?
It is in effect.
This April?
Yeah. Mr. Lee will know the specifics on the free totes and things, right? Mr. Lee?
It's a contract extension, but once appropriated and once we pass, certain elements from that will take effect more or less immediately. So they're going, Meridian is going to extend some of those services early before the contract begins. Okay. When was the last time we actually renewed a contract instead of extending it? Because as I recall, on social media, I mentioned back in March that there was a 4% increase in Meridian charges, and I was told that I was, that I didn't know what I was talking about, that there's already a contract in there. And I've got, it's on Facebook. And it was said that this was, that we were already under contract with Meridian. So why are we doing this now with this extension if we already renewed? And it was, said that, that this was, that we were already under contract with, with Meridian. So why are we doing this now with this extension if we already renewed? That's what I'd like to know. And I can't find the renewal that you told me to go to. You sent me a copy of the renew, of the contract that, that was from two thousand thirteen.
I can only speak for myself. I'm, I'm in favor of, because I believe it's in the best interest of the city.
I'm not talking about, I'm in favor of it too. But I'd like to know why, I'm, I'm always made to be a fool when I mention things like, what's the, what's, when is Meridian's contract coming up? And then I'm told on social media, which Mr. Egan can witness, that I'm told that I'm stupid, that the, the contract is already in effect. But here we are now, we're, we're extending it.
This is a contract extension. I sent you the contract.
That was an expired contract. It expired the four, two thousand fourteen.
And it was, and it was renewed.
It was extended.
Yes, it was.
It wasn't renewed.
It was extended, just like we're extending this contract.
We haven't had a renewal on this contract since it was originally posted.
I don't want to deal with them. Yeah, that's, that's all.
Oh, you want to shut me down now? That's fine. I'll shut you down on my side too then. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no further comments. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes. Bill number ninety-two ninety passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three twenty-nine. Bill number ninety-two ninety-one, I will move for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Tildrath. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance to enable the City of Florissant, Missouri to join Show Me Pace pursuant to section sixty-seven, two eight zero zero to six seven, two eight three five RSMO, the Property Assessment Clean Energy Act, and stating the terms under which the city will conduct activities as a member of such district.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes. Bill number ninety-two eighty-five passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three thirty. The next item on the agenda is new business. The first item in new business is board appointments. Mayor?
Thank you. I'd like to reappoint to the senior commission, Susan Jakot, of Ward six.
Councilman Tildrath moves to approve the mayor's appointment, seconded by Mr. Kaputa. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment is made. Next, we have resolution nine ninety-seven.
Resolution expressing the Florissant City Council's support for efforts to repeal Missouri's so-called right-to-work law.
Councilman Tildrath moves for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Kaputa. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Resolution expressing the Florissant City Council's support for efforts to repeal Missouri's so-called right-to, right-to-work law.
Councilman Tildrath moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Kaputa. Roll call.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes. Bill number ninety-two ninety passes unanimously. Bills for first reading, bill number ninety-two ninety-two.
Ordinance to approve final subdivision plot of Suri Plaza Two for the property located twenty-seven ten North Highway sixty-seven.
Bill number ninety-two ninety-three.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $36,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number forty-nine twenty-nine, police building maintenance for the purpose of painting the jail cell area.
The councilman Tildrath moves for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Hankey. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $36,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number forty-nine twenty-nine, police building maintenance for the purpose of painting the jail cell area.
Councilman Tildrath moves for a third reading. Seconded by Councilman Hankey. Roll call, please.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes. Bill number ninety-two ninety-three passes unanimously. Bills for first reading, bill number ninety-two ninety-two.
Ordinance to approve final subdivision plot of Suri Plaza Two for the property located twenty-seven ten North Highway sixty-seven.
Bill number ninety-two ninety-three.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $36,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number forty-nine twenty-nine, police building maintenance for the purpose of painting the jail cell area.
Councilman Tildrath moves for a third reading. Seconded by Councilman Hankey. Roll call, please.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes. Bill number ninety-two ninety-three passes unanimously. Bills for first reading, bill number ninety-two ninety-two.
Ordinance to approve final subdivision plot of Suri Plaza Two for the property located twenty-seven ten North Highway sixty-seven.
Bill number ninety-two ninety-three.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $36,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number forty-nine twenty-nine, police building maintenance for the purpose of painting the jail cell area.
Councilman Tildrath moves for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Hankey. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $36,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number forty-nine twenty-nine, police building maintenance for the purpose of painting the jail cell area.
Councilman Tildrath moves for a third reading. Seconded by Councilman Hankey. Roll call, please.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes. Bill number ninety-two ninety-three passes unanimously. Bills for first reading, bill number ninety-two ninety-two.
Ordinance to approve final subdivision plot of Suri Plaza Two for the property located twenty-seven ten North Highway sixty-seven. Bill number ninety-two ninety-three. Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $36,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number forty-nine twenty-nine, police building maintenance for the purpose of painting the jail cell area.
Councilman Tildrath moves for a third reading. Seconded by Councilman Hankey. Roll call, please.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes.
Bill number ninety-two ninety-three passes unanimously. Bills for first reading, bill number ninety-two ninety-two.
Ordinance to approve final subdivision plot of Suri Plaza Two for the property located twenty-seven ten North Highway sixty-seven. Bill number ninety-two ninety-three. Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $36,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number forty-nine twenty-nine, police building maintenance for the purpose of painting the jail cell area.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Councilman Egan?
No, I was seconding it earlier.
Oh, I, I apologize.
I was moving for a second reading. Thank you. It's the heat.
It, it must be the heat. Hearing no further comments. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Pogano?
Yes. Bill number ninety-two ninety-three passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three thirty-one.
The chief and I thank you.
The next item on the agenda is council announcements.
Thank you.
Councilman Egan?
Thank you very much, ma'am. The Tohman Lutheran Men's Club runs a series of barbecues throughout the year. We're fortunate enough that this coming weekend, Saturday and Sunday, is one of those dates. They're, they're, you know, only second none to St. Burden Inn's barbecue, but they have a pretty good barbecue down there. There are great men and women down there that pull it off. Their charities are really outstanding. They've sent people to foreign countries for missionaries. They've supported our barbecue with some of the funds that they make. And so I would ask that you remember this Saturday and Sunday, they serve eleven to seven. It's at twelve eighty-five North New Florissant. And correction, Saturday's eleven to seven, Sunday's twelve to seven. Eleven to seven, twelve to seven, stop by and get some of their delicious barbecue fare. Secondly, as usual, Race to Shrine October twenty-first, a great event that occurs at, at our, our crown jewel of the City of Florissant, and goes through Ward six, Old Town. So if you want to find out, if you want to be a volunteer, you want to be a sponsor, you want to go couch to twelve K, there's still time to do that. Or you can join me at the race at racetoshrine.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kaputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, first thing, as I say like every other council meeting, if you own a firearm, make sure you secure them, be a responsible firearm, keep them secure, don't leave them in your vehicles. Another thing, Representative Allen Green of the sixty-seventh district, he represents some of Florissant area. He is holding, holding the Jamestown Mall Economic Development Shopping Center meeting. He hosted one last time, very, very informative meeting. This one will be July thirteenth at the Blackjack Fire Protection District, fifty-six seventy-five North Highway sixty-seven at six P.M. There's a blackjack fire up on, up on North Lindbergh Moore towards Jamestown Mall. Also FEMA's been going around, I don't know if anybody has seen them or talked to FEMA. FEMA has been going around dropping off literature for them to, to sign up for if you had any flood disaster, or disaster from the previous flood that we had. I know a lot of people on social media was talking about FEMA, why haven't we contacted FEMA? The way FEMA has, the city has to take, or the government, the city gov, or the governor has to get a hold of the federal government before FEMA can be, to come in and, and declare it a disaster area. So if you need help from FEMA, their phone number is one eight hundred six two one FEMA, or their website is W W dot disaster assistant dot gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lee?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on another great fireworks display by the City of Florissant this year. And Mr. Parson, as far as the weather, it could have been a little cooler, but we'll be all right with no rain, so that was a good thing. I also wanted to remind council people, we, I had sent something out, I'm gonna send another one out tonight, about, we have some vacancies and expired terms on personnel commission, then they don't have, they can't, they don't have an official quorum. So one will be expiring in three days, three are expired, and one's vacant. So I'll send another reminder email, but please see if you can find somebody to fill those, those vacancies. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, just want to remind everybody, there's somebody always hungry morning, noon, or night. Don't forget team, it's a street over, you guys are always looking for volunteers too. Also, I'd like to mention, it looks like there's a new thief in Ward two, and they're going through the cars, so please lock the doors. This thief is a, not a bad thief, he's not beating out windows. Everybody's leaving their cars unlocked over there, so he's just helping himself to whatever in the car. So please lock them doors. I seen one of the engineers with St. Louis County on the Shackelford job, he told me in less than a couple weeks, they will move to the other side. He did tell me that, I'd say about maybe six weeks ago, but it didn't happen then, but he did say, hey, Timmy, I didn't forget you. He sent me a real nice email and said, we are going to get to the other side. So please be patient, be careful, and watch out for the construction workers also. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Tildrath?
Thank you, Madam President. I just would like to reiterate to the folks that drive on Graham Road and on Washington, those projects are moving along. The one on Graham Road is close to completion. The one on Washington will be several more months, but please exercise patience and caution when you're driving on there. I would like to thank Mr. Egan, Chief Lawrie, Captain Fagan, Officer Mike Ryder, for taking part and playing in the twenty-fourth Friends of Betty Shuldrough Golf Tournament on Sunday. We had a hundred and twenty-eight players. Howard Richards, the Assistant Athletic Director at the University of Missouri, was there, and he was quite impressed with our course, and he will be back. He lives in Bellman Farms, right up the road, and he's going to be taking advantage of the course. He didn't know what great shape it's in. Also, another player was Edmonton Oilers forward Patrick Maroon, a St. Louisan, and he was quite surprised, and he will be returning also. I would like to thank the staff at the Florissant Golf Club, John Vod at catering to you, they did a great job, and the businesses that helped, and thanks to all the whole sponsors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sayam?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just going to remind Ward nine residents of our Neighborhood Watch meeting next Monday, July seventeenth at six P.M. It's going to be in the Arts and Crafts Room in the basement of the Egan Center. So I just wanted to encourage you to come meet our ward captain, Andrew Mims, and Officer Michael, and just get involved in the Neighborhood Watch and help keep us safe. Again, that's next Monday evening, July seventeenth at six P.M. in the Egan Center. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Again, I would like to, again, thank our Parks Department. It was an excellent display of fireworks. I love the new ground ones. And also, please remember, when it, it's this hot outside, your pets and your elderly need some love and attention. These, I've had a few phone calls this week over neighbors being upset about neighbors' dogs being out, short leashes, no water, flies. It's very hot. It's as hot to them as they are to you, so please take care of your pets. And also, please check the elderly. If you have any elderly neighbors, just please keep an eye that they're okay and that they're cool and are getting plenty of liquids. Councilman Kaputa?
Thank you, Madam President.
These, I've had a few phone calls this week over neighbors being upset about neighbors' dogs being out, short leashes, no water, flies. It's very hot. It's as hot to them as they are to you, so please take care of your pets. And also, please check the elderly. If you have any elderly neighbors, just please keep an eye that they're okay and that they're cool and are getting plenty of liquids. Councilman Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I was gonna, I failed to mention it before, I was gonna say the same thing about the elderly and your pets. Believe me, I know it's hot out there, I work on it every day. Very warm out there, so make sure you keep your pets indoors and do check on your elderly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Just following up on the comments about the fireworks and so forth, and the not shooting firearms and being responsible with them. We did have a very excellent fireworks display, very well attended, it was a great show. But as you probably noticed, the month of June and early July were quieter this year a little bit than last year, and last year was significantly quieter than the year before. And then what we saw in the news right after the 4th of July was, was one report after another of people getting hurt, getting burned, children, elderly getting hurt by fireworks, by amateur fireworks displays. And I was just very, very pleased that the chief and I and this council got ahead of this curve and started a couple years ago, then we noticed that things were starting to get out of hand. And obviously, things are out of hand in St. Louis and St. Charles County with fireworks, and I'm just glad that we got ahead of the curve. And I, to my knowledge, we don't, I don't know of any injuries that occurred in the city limits of Florissant. But I do want to share an injury, a very sad injury, that was in the post dispatch today, not in Missouri, but in Indiana, where Indiana loves basketball, and everybody has a basketball court in their yard just about. A 13-year-old Indiana boy was outside playing basketball, and sadly, he was struck by a bullet traveling almost straight down that somebody shot from afar and killed him. So what goes up does come down, and the life of a child or a pet or even an adult might depend on your, being safe with your firearms. Please don't shoot them off at New Year's Eve this year, or next 4th of July, or at any time. Please don't shoot them up in the air, because what comes up, comes down. While we're thinking about what's up, on August 21st, there's gonna be a full eclipse of the, of the sun by the moon, but not in Florissant. It will never be safe to look at the sky in Florissant. It won't be, and you'll have to, even if you do get where it full eclipses, you'll need to have the special glasses. You will suffer permanent eye damage if you try to view this event without protection. And again, it will not, we will not be a full eclipse in Florissant. You'll have to go probably to Chesterfield or Baldwin just to get a few seconds of it. You'll have to go to like St. Clair or something to get a full, a full eclipse. So just be mindful of the dangers of looking at that event. Very rare. I'm been honored by Senator Gina Walsh to serve on the Missouri Transportation Task Force. We're gonna be meeting six times this year. We already met once in Jefferson City, and this, later this month, we'll be meeting in Kansas City. And unfortunately, I'll be there on the 26th, which is Wednesday night out, I'll be in Kansas City. Won't be able to get back in time. And Madam President, I wonder if you could preside over the ceremony for Gretchen Crank? And it is, it is fitting that you do so, because Gretchen is only the fourth individual woman to be honored in our walk-through history, and it's a real honor that we recognize her in that capacity. She did so much for our historical preservation. There are two other women that were recognized with their husband, but she's only the fourth after St. Philippien, Rosemary Davison and one other individual that was a plumber, what was her name again? Down by Click Heating and Cooling. So she's only the fourth one. So if you would do that for us. And then we, the mayors of the state welcomed Lyda Krusen to the mayor's club, so to speak, in Herman a couple weeks ago. And the concert series returns July 15th with Rock and Share Band, and they're terrific. Rachel saw them at another location last weekend, she said they were absolutely fantastic. And they'll be followed by SSJ Rock and Roll Show Band. And then after the next council meeting, we'll have Butch Wax on the 29th and Smash Band on August 5th. So we got some entertainment coming. And like I said, July 26th will be the next Wednesday night out. That'll be an asphalt beach party, so to speak, between STEM's Florist and the husband insurance agency. It'll be a beach party. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that's the next month, isn't it? Okay, this one's gonna be a movie night at the, at the Knights Grounds. It's not gonna be at the Shrine, it's gonna be at the Knights Pavilion. I think they're gonna prob, it'll probably be a little bit better, easier to watch the movie from that location, plus if it drizzles a little bit, everybody can be covered. Sorry about that. The beach party's in August. Thank you.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be on Monday, July 24th, 2017. Councilman Hanky moves to adjourn. Seconded by Mr. Sayam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, and the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for coming.[1717.88]